Good evening, this is Jason Anderson and I am calling the special town council meeting to order. It is currently seven PM on Tuesday, July first, two thousand twenty-five. For roll call purposes, all council members are in attendance, except for Mr. Whitehead, who was absent with notification. We'll move on in the agenda. Next item up is item three, interviews of boards and commission applicants. Daniel Ba is seeking reappointment to the Historic District Commission. As an alternate member, his term would run from April first, two thousand twenty-five, to March thirty-first, two thousand twenty-eight. This is alternate member position number one. Mr. Ba attended zero out of one meetings out of in two thousand twenty-five and zero out of three meetings in two thousand twenty-four. The Historic District Commission currently has no vacancies. The alternate member term runs for three years, from April first to March thirty-first. Daniel, if you could come forward and sit up here and just turn the microphone on, just hit the button on it till it lights up green. Welcome. Just tell us a little bit about yourself, why you're seeking reappointment to the Historic District Commission?
Yeah, I live on the Broad Street and sometimes you have to get involved in something. You know, so for the first I heard about it, I want to be part of it. But since last I've been sick, you know, I just, I'm recovering from stroke, so I'm just getting better, so I decided to get re- later again, then I can do what I have to do.
Well, I'm glad you're, to see you're here seeking reappointment. I do know a bunch of their meetings, they haven't had due to quorum. So i- it's great that you're feeling healthier now and you're seeking reappointment. Any questions, comments from council? Ms. Grandowski?
I appreciate your, you know, your being, you know, looking to be reappointed. Again, I appreciate everybody that goes to the boards and commissions, and we're all volunteers and, but we need that im- impact, so thank you. I like you coming forward.
Hello. Happy to hear you're doing better. And again, like Ed said, thank you for your reappointment. We were just talking about this in economic development, and it seems when people join a commission, they always come back. So it's nice to see that people really enjoy working on these. What made you choi- choose Historic Commission?
Yeah, it's mostly like, I originally from Africa, you know, from Ghana, so and I think it's some, one of the group year like, that has, that there's not much pressure, too much, there's not too much pressure I have to, you know, so I say I can do this, you know, it'll be fine, it'll be good too, I'm part of the city and I'll be part of what is going on, or I'll know what is going on, it's about history going on and everything, so that's, I like, I like to be part of anything, something, you know.
So it's a nice one to get your feet wet.
Yeah. I raised my daughters years old, I lived here for a while, so.
Nice.
It's better I get myself involved in something.
Well, thank you for stepping up.
Thank you.
So, so you're on Broad, oops, yeah, you're on Broad Street. So that's, there's quite a few historic houses that are on Broad Street, too. Are, do you actually own one of, or live in one of those houses?
Yeah, they said my house is, I think, I don't know if it's true, but I know some things about the house right now, and I know if maybe true or not, because the first floor is rather like the, is the addition. It looks like they leave the first floor, first and second floor, they put this first floor on a red. Originally, that is what it is. I find out myself when I was trying to do something, they fix the ceiling, the living room, and I was like, it looks like the basement is haunted, you know. So, but, um, the person who showed the footage said, originally that person is, um, is a doctor, or eye doctor for the president or something, so I don't know what makes it, uh, historical building, but I get to know that it's not part of the historical building, even though he was telling me that, but it looks like historical building, it's eighteen, eighteen seventy-six or something, eighteen seventy.
Good.
Any other questions, comments from council? Do you have any questions for us?
I don't know, I mean, now I'm getting to know a lot of people, most of the council, last time I knew some of them, but now, I came to a meeting last time, and so it looks like I'm meeting the same, most of the same people, and it's good knowing you guys, you know.
Well, we will be voting on your reappointment next Tuesday.
Okay.
Thank you, have a good evening.
Thank you.
Moving on in the agenda, next item up is item three B. Blair Davis Jr. is seeking appointment to the Vision Committee as an alternate member. His term would run from July first, two thousand twenty-five, to December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-five. This would be alternate member position number two. The Vision Committee currently has two alternate member vacancies. The alternate member term runs until December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-five. Mr. Davis, if you could come forward, please. And could you tell us a little bit about your background and why you're seeking to serve on the Vision Committee?
Absolutely. My name's Blair Davis. My, myself and my family, you know, my parents have lived in the town, my grandparents have lived in this town, so we've been in the town. My dad actually used to own Bellade's Restaurant before I was born, but just a very long Davis history. My grandfather Otis was the principal of Killen Memorial School. My grandmother was a kindergarten teacher, so we, we've just been in the town quite a while, and I had a close friend of mine who is currently on the Vision Committee that really just recommended it to me, and said, hey, you know, you've been in this town a long time, your family's been here a long time, I have three children, so it's just one of those things when I hear about, and I get a little bit of information, not a ton admittedly, but there's enough to say, hey, you know, if I'm gonna raise children in the town, I would love to be a part of, and, you know, listen to, and just, you know, be aware of, of the direction that the town's going in.
Thank you. Definitely wanna say thank you for coming forward and looking to serve. To me, the Vision Committee i- is something that means a lot to me. It's something I've, I've wanted to get off the ground and get up and running for quite a few years now, and the fact that we've got it started now, and they're starting to get some work done, and get some direction, and heading in direction to figure out where we wanna see this town in the future. I just think it's re- really important. I think it's gonna be something great for the town, and like I said, I'm glad to see that you're here to serve the community. I will open up to council members for questions, comments.
Thank you for coming forward, Blair. The Vision Committee, I found very interesting. We, I think we had a, such an eclectic group of people, a lot of different backgrounds, and I think it's helpful that, you know, you're, you're a third generation person in the town, you're able to kinda pass down where the town, where it's been, where it's coming from, and kinda where it wants to go, and I think that's the best way to kinda come up with a plan moving forwards. Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Likewise, as, as somebody that's also spent a lifetime in town, multiple generations, it's, it's really, it's really cool to be able to see where you've been, and see how much progress. I mean, not all, not all movement is always positive, but I, I think in general, the town has moved, and, you know, we've done a little, in the eighties, we did a little backtrack, 'cause we lost the Borough Police, but I, you know, if you've had a chance to go up and down Main Street anytime lately, it's, it's, it's starting to turn, it's doing that huge turnaround, and.
My kids and I walk up the road, you know, we, we live right, you know, right down the, a couple miles away from here, so we, we eat at George's Galley, you know, once every other week, where my wife loves her Two Dogs Coffee, I prefer chubby, you know, I don't. You know, so, you know, my, my, my kids love.
Chubby dog.
Actually taking, you know, taking the lockdown and everything, so it's, we're local locals, you know, so.
But yeah, it's, it's, it's nice to be able to have that, like Tony said, that perspective of where you've been, because then when you get to where you are, you can say, okay, what did we learn on the way to get to where we are, so. Thank you so much for coming forward.
Thank you.
If you were looking to promote Killenly to someone who's from out of town, what would be the top thing you would say, as far as describing Killenly, what Killenly has to offer?
I, I actually have used the phrase picturesque several times. So my, my parent, I, I bought their house, that they owned for about twenty-five years, and then, so they, they moved down to Florida, and they come up generally when they can in the, in the summer months. So I got to te- I give them the news that there were so many businesses just downtown in, you know, general that have opened up, and I said, you know, Dad, this is, this is so much different than when you left. They opened up so many different things, these old businesses that were closed when you moved down, we're, you know, are here now, and we can, and again, I feel comfortable with my, my small children walking down Main Street, not that I ever had too big of an issue, you know, I'd always walk to the high, from the high school to wrestling practice, things like that, but it's just, it's a, it's a safe town, but you have, you know, those local businesses right there, and then if you like the, the larger chain, you go right down to the Killenly Commons, you have two or three parks for small children, there's just, there's something for everybody, and it's, you can tell that there's effort that have been put in, and I think a lot of the funding has been used in good ways to do that. Again, as a, as a parent of small kids, I get to see them at the splash pad and just, you know, screaming their heads off, and then we can go down to the lot, you know, the Lions Park, you know, for swinging and things like that, so, you know, it's kinda how I would tell who, you know, depends on who I'm talking to, but.
What would be one thing that Killenly could change that would improve Killenly?
So, you know, bring back the Springtime Festival. I would love that. We, I was actually just this morning talking to my wife, and she had mentioned, you know, what happened to the Tomato Festival? And I said, when I was a kid, you'd go down to the Springtime Festival Parade, and that, and just everyone was there, and, you know, people, I remember people would be sitting up on that rock wall watching the parade, you know, you couldn't, you couldn't keep people away, and it was just a big to-do, and it was such a unifying thing, you know, there were, you know, there were vendors, float, all these kinda things. So e- even just events like that, that would really bring people that generally, you know, keep to themselves, or keep inside, or, or go elsewhere for those kinda things, if you bring attention to that downtown area, into those local businesses that can thrive, events like that, I think would, would do great.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments from council members?
I've got one, I've always got a kinda funny one, like is there meaning to that stripe tattoo?
You know, I'll be, I'll be honest with you, I was nineteen with about two hundred dollars to spend, and there was a trend going on of people with striped tattoos, so I would, I would love to tell you that there's a deeper meaning. But there, there was just a trend of, of, of people that didn't want the, the full tattoo sleeve, so that they, they use that as the stopper. I can tell you that my, my grandparents were very superstitious type, so they always told me, my grandmother specifically, always said, if you, you know, if you get the full ring, you, you'll lose that part of your body in, in the afterlife, and I said, I'm not really sure how true that is. But when I did it, I specifically asked the artist to br- to, to leave open little spots, just so she wouldn't lose. I had little breaks in each line, just so she knew I would be, I would be in one piece. So if, if I, I guess there's some meaning to that, to that.
There absolutely is.
Hi Blair.
Hi.
Thank you so much for stepping up, and as Tony said, and as Tammy, I'm also generational, and I have family here for decades and decades and decades, and it's a unique perspective that we have. It's wonderful to see how many people have moved here and fell in love with the town that we've known since we were little, little, but I, I just, I love this town, and I'm so happy to see this Vision Committee, because we know what it was, we know the bumps in the road, and then we know what the potential is, so thank you for stepping up.
Sure, thank you.
So you said that. One of the ways to engage people that usually like to be by themselves is the Springtime Festival. Do you have any other ideas how to engage people that basically like to be alone, isolated?
Well, thankfully for me, I, I sold cars for a few years, so I, I can, I can engage a, a lot of people in a lot of different ways, but I guess, really, the thing is, drawing people out has always been something that, as someone that's slightly homebody myself, I just, I always like something where I can take my family to. I can't speak to, you know, the grandparents out there, or anything like that, as, as far as how to really move that, but again, if, I just believe that if you have events generally that are geared toward the children, and you get the parents out, and you have these kind of unifying, almost mixer events, that really, that can draw people out, again, you get people, you get people talking, you get them to this business, to this area, oh, I didn't know that was there, I didn't know that was here. But the, the reason why I'm trying to join the, the specific committee is really to, to learn and to, to listen to the other perspectives, because I don't have every answer, I don't have every idea on how to, you know, save the town, and I certainly don't have that, that complex side, but just to hear the process and try to help any way I can with that.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions from council?
Appreciate, appreciate you coming forward, and like I said, I, I encourage people to come on, and we're all volunteers, and we just try to do the best we can.
Thank you. Thank you.
Do you have anything further for us?
I do not.
Okay.
I just wanted to say thank you very much for, for hearing, I mean, I haven't got any questions for me, I wasn't sure what to expect, so I do appreciate it.
Thank you. We will be voting on your appointment next Tuesday. Thank you. We'll now move on in the agenda. Next item up is citizen statements and petitions. With this being a special town council meeting, we just ask any comments be relative to the items on this evening's agenda, which would be the two appointments that we just heard, and the new business, which is meeting with the Killenly Housing Authority. So we will open up for citizens' comments. Buddy, do we have anything submitted by email?
No, sir.
Thank you. Last call for public comment. Seeing none, we'll move on in the agenda. We have nothing for old business, so we'll move on to item six A, new business, meeting with Killenly Housing Authority and staff liaison Carol Green.
Thanks for having us, Emily.
That's okay Carol, you can handle it.
I even made notes while I'm sitting there. Dave Smith apologizes, he's not feeling well, and it was supposed to have been David and I, but what you see is what you get.
Yeah, but you do a good job, so, you know, I mean, it's always been, everything over there, you run it on a shoestring budget, and it works, so I, I appreciate that.
Well, thank you. I appreciate that too, and I appreciate what you've been able to do for us with the chairlifts, the elevator, you saved us, I assure you.
Well, hopefully we can continue, we can find funds to do, to help you out, 'cause like I said, it, you earn it, those people, you, you got a tough crowd to deal with, so.
You just develop a very hard shell, you know, because criticism comes quite frequently, but that's the age, and I'm at that age, and I know all about it. Well, the chairlift, let me get into a couple of things. I have to tell you, Ulla knows this, the elevator and the chairlift broke, both broke down about a month ago. The elevator, after the hundred and some thousand dollars that was spent on it, a lady came running into my office saying, there's something wrong with the elevator when the doors opened, there's a big door in the middle and nothing on the sides. The door had become disconnected on the right-hand side, and apparently it slid over, and it was right down the center, so we, of course, we had to call Otis, and in the meantime, we're right about at lunchtime, so they went to get the chairlift going, the battery was dead, and there was a part missing, so therefore, it'll be great to have the other two, and I don't know when we'll be able to do that, Ulla will probably, or Jason will let us know at some point in time when we can start to talk to somebody, we'll have to put it out to bid. And I don't know if it will be through the Housing Authority that you'll do that, or if it will be, Mary Brom seems to serve as our liaison for the Housing Authority, and maybe she would be the person that would be the one to put it out to bid. I know she, she's right up to here, she has a lot with the school projects, but if any help is needed, we're more than willing to, to jump in and to assist. Couple of things, we are still in the process of applying for the grant for Birchwood Terrace, and it's been kind of long and drawn out, but we're working with CHFA, and there's a whole different process than what there was when applying for small cities money. We are right now in the middle of having the environmentals done. They have checked for asbestos, they've checked for radon, we're looking to get the, that back. They need to do a topographical survey, which is quite expensive, I understand, but that's a requirement, so we're still going forth. We are definitely going to have to apply to them for pre-development money, because the Housing Authority, the finances and what we have to spend for the housing, from the Housing Authority, it's based on what we have for money in reserves, and of course, it's not a lot, but there are three different projects. When you look at the elderly program, they consider having three. There was the first forty units that were built in nineteen seventy-two, in that front cul-de-sac around the gazebo. Then the next section was back forty apartments in the rear cul-de-sac, so that is a separate project, and then Birchwood Terrace was in the early eighties when they built that one. So what they do is, we take the reserves, you divide those reserves by three, and then there is a thousand dollars per unit that is required to be on hand for each unit, so if we divide, say we have a hundred and sixty thousand dollars or so, divide that into, now for each project, we subtract that forty thousand dollars that we have to keep in reserves, and then the balance is what they expect that we should be spending. So right now, I think it's that we are going to have to spend out of pocket for this Birchwood project before we can apply for pre-development, would be about forty thousand dollars. So that is going to take a chunk out of everything, but we need to go forth with it. There's, there was an expansion in two thousand and one, started and was completed at the end of two thousand and two. All of the units at Birchwood Terrace, there were, of all of them, the forty, there were ten that were built originally for what they call a double, for couples. It was larger, square footage was around six hundred and some thousand, six hundred, excuse me, square feet, I wish it was six hundred thousand. The remaining thirty apartments are about, were about four hundred and fifty square feet, and we expanded them, we popped them out ten feet, and when doing that, the contractor, I mean, everything went very well, we were happy with it, but over a period of time, where that joint is, we're having cracking in the walls and in the floors, so that's another thing that we have to contend with, and so the amount of money that the grant, they had originally mentioned five million dollars, and then when we had the scope of work prepared by an architect that we had previously, he came in at around four, four million. With the changes in the prices of everything, I'm sure now we'll probably be at five and possibly more. So that's the progress that we've made on the grant. We recently hired a company that had done the sidewalks in town, grinding them down, because we had a lot of areas with frosty eaves, tripping, tripping hazards. It was split out, it came to, I believe, six thousand eight hundred just for the Maple Courts area, and Maple Courts two, which was split out. Maple Courts two is definitely a separate company. It's all Killenly Housing, but there's separate checking, separate general ledger, separate accounting package, and so when we do anything like that, we have to spread that cost where it should be entertained. In addition, applications, I have over two hundred now with the applications that have, that have come in over the past three months. Every three months, we collect applications, we never, you'll notice out front, it always says, "Applications being accepted." We never close our waiting list. We allow them to continuously send in applications, come in, prepare them, and we, we hold them for three months, and at the end of that three months, by the request and the demand of Department of Housing, we do a lottery drawing, and they are pulled out lottery style, not to be placed as number one on our present waiting list, but they could obtain position number one at the bottom of our waiting list going down. And the reason for that is they feel as if it always shouldn't be first come, first served, that they want everyone within that three-month period to have a fair chance at getting their application pulled, possibly before somebody that came in a little earlier, so that's that progress. If you're gonna butt in, you can. We just signed another contract, this will be our third year with Witsen's, the food service that is working with the school system, I think you're all probably familiar with that, and things are going okay. There's always gonna be complaints about food, I mean, you hear all the time, it's not like my mother made, it's not like I made, but, you know, they seem to eat pretty well, so we're hoping that they're not too disconcerned. Terms of office, Jason, how did that work out? Has that been settled? The Housing Authority, those terms were always five years, but by some era, they were issuing three-year terms, so that we would end up with two or three people being, their term being expiring at the same time. Have they, how have they fixed that, or have they not?
We, we went through, we went through a bunch of different boards and commissions correcting their terms recently. It just wasn't with the Housing Authority, it was planning and zoning. We had a similar issue where, based off of the last appointments, you had almost the whole planning and zoning commission's term expiring at once, which you can only have so many members expire per year, so we had to go through and make sure that all the terms got corrected as far as the lengths, and when they're staggering falls.
So if I were to speak to Ashley in the town manager's office, she would be able to tell me that, possibly?
Yeah, she, she would have.
But she was the one that was, I think, kinda taking care of it, wasn't she?
Yeah.
Okay, because it's, I'm not sure as far as, there might be someone on there now that that term would have expired, because they filled a portion at the end of this year. I just wanted to be able to get it straightened out.
Okay.
I don't know how many of you, I know in the past, we've spoken about the Section Eight program, and I just wanted you to know that we just were awarded another contract for what they call its program, that not only provides housing, it services, we can service up to, I believe, ten people, but in addition to the housing, it prepares people to be able to live independently, they have services from Access Agency, and this is probably about our seventeenth year, I think, that we've had that, and there were a lot of questions over the past. over the past year of whether or not there would be enough funding for it. But, they did sign that, or they did approve it. I'm just waiting for signatures from each assign. And another thing, I wanted to just let you know that we do a lot with Soldier Sailors and Marine Fund. And I don't think I've ever mentioned that to you. Bill Woodbury, who works for the Veterans Association, and anyone who has served within a conflict period, any veteran that served, that was honorably discharged, they are entitled to a month's free rent, as well as they get some type of gift cards from, I believe it's Target and Walmart. They get food vouchers. And I mean, there, there is a limit on income, but it's not, it's not real small, let's put it that way. So, that most of them, they qualify. And over the past two years, two or three years, in addition to receiving a free month's rent, they've been giving them two, because apparently, there was so much money that the administration was told to get rid of some of that money and to use it to pay for the vets' rents. And I mean, some of these rents are running eight or nine hundred dollars a month, so they're getting that. And we provide all the paperwork for them, as well as trying to get other services for the vets. And we have quite a few. They're all aging, of course, and some of the conflicts now are a little sketchy. All the Vietnam guys and everything, they're at that age now. Whereas, after Vietnam, there wasn't, there was a few, but not as many. And there's also, I, I don't know if I should say names, but we have, we have a woman that lives at Birchwood Terrace. Her name is Carol Coffin. And she quilts, and she makes gorgeous, gorgeous quilts. She is a member of what they call Quilts of Valor. And she has been making them. And she was working with people in Massachusetts, and I've known her for a long time. And I said, well, how come you're not in Connecticut? And she said, I don't know. I just bring them there, and I don't do any of the presentations. But, she said, I'll ask. And they said, of course, that she could. So, she has started doing this, and she has given out now seven quilts to veterans within the Killenly Housing Authority. And there's a little ceremony. I mean, it's, it's not a lot of people involved, but the, the wives are just, the wives or family members of the person, the vet, can come in and receive those. And I just think it's a nice, it's a real nice gesture. Those quilts are registered. Other than that, I think I've talked enough. Everybody wants to, we'll watch, are the Red Sox on tonight? I heard that.
Just wanted to thank you for coming forward and giving us the update on the Housing Authority. I will open up to council members with any questions or comments. Mr. Kattul.
Is the elevator repaired now? Is it back in service?
Yes, yes. They came that morning. We have a maintenance agreement that we pay twenty-eight hundred dollars every three months. They're, they're on speed dial. And when we called, he was in the area. I think they spend an awful lot of time at D. Kimball. So, they're usually right there, and they come to us. So, he, he was a younger guy. And when I say young, he probably was fifty, right? No, he was young. And so, he was kind of stymied at the whole thing. So, he called someone else, and the two of them, they got it fixed right after lunch. But, we had the kitchen, the waitress and what have you, and our housekeepers. They were all running meals upstairs to bring to the people up on that, that top floor. So, but, it was, it was fixed that day. The chairlift wasn't fixed until Monday. And you know, the weird thing is, that company has a garage right next door to us, you know, where Greens was, that company.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. But, but they don't work on chairlifts. So, they came from, I believe, New Britain. It's always something. Well, thank you very much.
So, the, the budget's passed. So, as soon as you get that, whatever you have to do, those chairlifts will be ready to be installed.
Okay. Well, I'll, I'll speak with you. Is it Buddy? Can I call you Buddy? Can I get in touch with you then? And we can, our gen in finance to find out at a certain time if we can go out to bid for the additional two. Okay. All right. I'm sure you have enough on your plate.
Like you're, like you have anything less than the rest of us. I mean, you're, how many residents do you have over there?
We have a hundred and sixty-three apartments with husband and wives. We probably have over two hundred now people. And it's just Jason Laville doing the congregate. And I mean, we have three maintenance men, but it's, it's getting, it's getting tough. It really is. Because, I mean, you all know how the federal and the state governments, I mean, it's more, they keep saying, you know, they're trying to simplify. But, everything they simplify seems to make it so hard that you just have so much trouble getting through it. So, thank you.
So, you, you do a fabulous job, and I know your residents do appreciate what you do for them.
Thanks, Tammy. Thanks. I miss seeing you over there.
Ah, my peers. I don't do home care anymore. So...
I know, I know.
They, they used, that was almost like my home away from home.
It was.
And it was just so far out of my way.
Well, thank you again for everything that you've done for us. We're very appreciative and don't think it goes unnoticed. We've let a lot of our residents know. At the meetings, we talk about it. And also, just, you know the guys to thank. It's downtown. So, thank you. Thank you. Take care. Go home and see the Red Sox.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right. So, we'll now move on to the agenda. Next item up is executive session. We have nothing for executive session, so I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second motion was made by Mr. Grandowski, second by Ms. Barclay. Discussion. All who's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? This meeting is adjourned.